So as you all know, this is a public hearing for the Board of Aldermen. You hear whatever you have to say about the proposition of establishing regulations for smoking in public places in St. Genevieve. Which includes addressing issues such as obesity, drug use, smoking. In order to encourage people to preserve their health rather than going to the hospital to get fixed, one of the elements of that, they opposed the Board of Aldermen and asked the Board to consider establishing an ordinance that restricts smoking in public places. The Board has not considered this. They have not discussed it. To my knowledge, they have not formed a group opinion, or individuals may have their opinion. But they are of an open mind and want to hear from those who have an opinion on the issue. Questions that have to be answered are many. Where is the definition of a public place? There are issues of distance and what do you do without clubs and organizations. There's just lots of things like that. I'll tell you that the 222 cities of the state of Missouri with populations above 2,500 people, there are 37 that banned smoking in public places. Nine, and that's all public places, and the public places by them is places where the public gathers, convenes, meets. Nine did that but excluded restaurants and private clubs. There are nine others that considered whether or not to pass some resolution or an ordinance and chose not to. I asked the city administrators from the cities where their Aldermen chose not to act, all reasons written down, but they included Aldermen's opinion that it's a legal product and that it was not within purview of the Board of Aldermen to tell people they can't use a product that is otherwise illegal. They were, another city minister told me that there are only a few places in the city where people allow smoking, and so the Board of Aldermen didn't feel that it was like a necessary action in order to protect the public from some general problem. The private club obviously was an issue, they didn't want to do it, but people voluntarily went. And interestingly, some of the ordinances that I have reviewed establish the voluntary nature of it as being a private club where the employees volunteer. So if you're paying an employee, you would not allow smoking in order to protect the paid employees from exposure to secondhand smoke. The theory is you shouldn't have to work in an area that has smoke. Freedom of choice issues were numerous, and then there was some concern about the effect it could have on the businesses where smoking was prevalent, as far as restaurants. The other issue that, another issue which the Board would have to consider would be whether or not to regulate smoking only in enclosed places. There are some communities that prohibit smoking in their parks. Many of the 37 affect, restrict smoking outside of buildings but within a certain number of feet from an open door or window. The issue of group homes, such as nursing homes, I think they probably all restrict smoking, the ones in St. Genevieve. Hotels and motels, that is generally handled by having a certain percentage of the rooms, a limit on the number of rooms or the percent of the rooms that can be smoking rooms. Arenas and stadiums, although the situation is in St. Genevieve, you just smoke, open area stadium.
But not at school.
Not at school. So, again, none of those issues have been discussed, the book is open. The purpose of our being here tonight is to hear what you, the interested parties, have to say. After this meeting, there will be no action taken until the Board convenes a regular session or a work session to discuss the issue further. It will be up to the Board to say to me to prepare the necessary paperwork for ordinance to be voted upon. Just because I'm going to write an ordinance doesn't mean that it's going to get passed. So, we, relatively few of us here tonight, so I don't have to give you a time limit. How many of you are going to speak, but I would encourage anyone who wants to speak that what you have to say is already been heard. You can limit your time and your energy by not repeating it. So, that's all I have to say, and the procedure's going to be for whoever wants to speak to come up here, stand where I'm standing, speak into the microphone, because this is Dean Tate, and he needs the sound to, and you'd like to see your face, so when they put on the video, it'll be more interesting to people who are looking in the back of your head.
I have a question. Is there orders in the book now about smoking as far as pretty place within the city, you know, the remote district sometimes?
There are no restrictions.
So this would be the first ordinance?
Yes.
That there is one?
Yes.
That...
So, for those of you at home who can't hear the question, the question is whether or not this has been considered by the Board and whether there's any regulations on the book today that address smoking. To my knowledge, it hasn't been considered, and there is no ordinance to date that addresses it. Okay, first up.
I'll get there sometime.
We can wait for you.
Come on up. And I might let you know that I've got a problem with speaking. Now... Hi, Mayor. Hi, Paul. My name is Tom DeNiro. Yeah, okay. First, you guys can... I'll do it. Hey, that's what...
When you get to the microphone, please get in the back seat.
Oh, don't worry. I don't want to hold anybody else.
Well, not just you, but anybody else is welcome to be.
My name is Carl Weyner, W-E-H-A-D-Y-R. I'm addressing the Board, I am going to pick everybody. But, I've got several things that I've got on my mind, but I'll make a chart for five minutes, ten minutes, I don't know. But I've got a problem with somebody telling me what I can do and what I can't do. I smoked 18 years. Incidentally, I'm going on 88. And I quit smoking in 1962. And the reason why I quit is because my good wife was going to have a child, alright? So, before that though, I saw the children, that went until 91. But, for somebody to tell me I can't smoke anywhere, I know, I was practically backed that up. If I go to your house and you don't want me to smoke, I won't smoke. But if I go outside, I have to get off of your, whatever you've got there, and smoke out in the street. I don't know why this, have to tell you what you can do as far as smoking. Is it once you do not have, take care of people that smoke, come into the hospital? We'll get over that too. But the thing that I, gets me is when you say, somebody comes up and wants an application, and when you say it's, you smoke, yeah, you're not going to hire me. But to one side of working in there now, or grandfather. Now, if I was going in to get an application and be turned down, I could be a attorney and see what I can do about it. I could say, "I can't smoke in your property, but I sure am held to smoke in mine." Or anywhere in town that allows me to smoke. I could go, go on to another, but I'm going to. I just tried to get something across, and thank you for your prayers. For the whole heaven. Yeah.
I love you told me you were wanting to speak.
I want to also, I don't want us, I know the hospital brought this to us, but I don't want to sit here and berate and persecute the hospital for bringing this up. I think it's, we need to share our opinions and what we feel about it, and try to keep it as personal and as directed to yourself, and what you feel as you can. You know, because it's just, like I say, I don't want anybody to, I don't believe anybody should be persecuted for coming up with an idea, you know, so just keep that in mind as you speak. Everybody speak.
My name is Teddy Ross, and I live on 1145 Valley Spring Trail in St. Genevieve. Mr. Hassler, Mr. Thomas, Board of Aldermen, thank you for this opportunity to address this issue, smoking. I think it has to do with secondhand smoking mostly. And it has to do with public places. I think that's what I'm getting. Anyway, first of all, I'm not a smoker. And when I, when I moved there, I think it's been 16 years, I didn't have any breathing problems. And since I moved there, I've had all kinds of breathing problems. And there's different things going around here that is a lot worse than secondhand smoking. I've never been bothered by secondhand smoking. And this is a rural area, and I moved here because it was a rural area. We have, it seems like we have more freedom, people are more laid back, people are more tolerant here. And I think that's one of the things we need to take a look at. Do we need another ordinance to restrict what is our rights? I think we need to watch this really closely when we start looking at an ordinance on smoking, that we make it sure that it works for everyone that lives here. We've lost a lot of freedoms and a lot of other things, and like I said, we're not the big city. We like living here because it's a nice rural area, and personally, I don't think we need a smoking ordinance. But if you guys decide that, let's make it work for everyone that lives here in this community. Thank you.
All right. Brian Wolfen, 210 St. Genevieve Drive. Fairly active in the city as far as municipal boards go, so I'm on the TV access board, I'm on the TIP Commission, I'm on the Board of Adjustments. I'm also a business owner, not in the city, as in, I own two convenience stores out of the city, one in Brerdtown, one in Valley Mines. Whether that gives me any credibility or not, I don't know, I thought I'd throw it out there anyways. Also, I'd also like to thank you guys for putting this together and allowing us to voice our opinions against this and hearing us out, so thank you for that. Full foreground here, when anything I'm going to say through here, I'm by no means a lawyer, I'm not stating that whether this is legally right or wrong, I'm just kind of going off the philosophical level here and as far as our rights are, especially as a business owner go. So I've read and researched the ordinance, what I would like to call an atrocity, of Farmington's non-smoking ordinance, because I believe it's probably, if something like this were to happen, that's probably what we closely resemble, I would assume. And really, I came to the conclusion that this isn't necessarily an issue of whether smoking in town is good or bad, but really what it boils down to is kind of like what the other arguments have said, is it's more the owner's rights, or I don't know if necessarily property rights is the way to go, but I guess owner's rights, you know, my rights, if you will. I believe really that you guys, as our government or local municipality, don't really have any right to come onto anyone's private business, whether it's a public place, to me, it's still considered a private business. Once again, I don't know how it's legally worded and how it legally will be worded, but it's just what I believe. And really, I don't believe you have the right to come on and tell them really how to run their business, and that's kind of exactly what has happened in Farmington. As a private business owner myself, I shouldn't really be told, nor do I like to be told, whether or not I can allow smoking in my stores. This for me, is kind of for me to decide, and it's kind of a relationship between me and my customer, you know, capitalism, free to choose, freedom of choice, I guess, and lost my spot here. And basically, if the customer, my customer base dislikes the fact that my place smells like smoke or is smoky, you know, they have a right to leave, and they really have the right to not come back, and that's on me and it's on them. I don't need protection from our municipality to make my place a-okay for customers to come in, I mean, that's for them to decide. That being said, I don't allow smoking in our establishment, I find it dirty, I've never even touched a cigarette to my mouth, I've been around it playing, tons of family members smoke, and, you know, I condemn it all, I actively even try to steer away folks from smoking. You can ask tons of my customers, I've asked them not to buy from us. Of course, I enjoyed their purchases, but at the same time, I do tell them to stop smoking is bad for them. Now, I guess the main question that the representative of the hospital had asked at the Board, or to the Board, was really how to prevent secondhand smoke, as you said, and I believe the answer to this question without any kind of overreach is, like I said, capitalism. It's by letting the consumer decide. If the consumer has a problem with the business because it allows smoking, but yet still loves their food, they should kind of be able to decide whether or not they want, if that food is worth the health risk, whether they think that is okay. And if they don't, they just simply go somewhere else, go some other restaurant. You know, really, as the negative mentality of smoking continues to grow, which I think we can all agree that has, especially over the last 20 years, you know, I think the number of private businesses, not only nationwide, but even locally, have done away with smoking. I really, I don't know many that allow smoking, or at least none of the ones that I go to in town do allow smoking. So I'm not really sure if there's a major issue here that is being brought up. So as far as, I will kind of change the direction here, as far as, an ordinance that I not, wouldn't necessarily support, but possibly have no, I don't really have a problem with is, you know, public buildings such as government-owned entities or buildings, you know, the park, I have no problem with that, you know, libraries, schools, of course, the hospital, I have no problem with that. If you guys, if you guys are going to have, you know, no smoking policy as far as your four years ago, I don't have a problem with it at all. You're the employer, so you should be able to make that decision, you're Board, however that, however that works. But, kind of egoting, I'd kind of like to rebut the argument that really that I've seen most, but kind of doing this research, is the customer's right to not breathe in someone else's smoke. While I would agree with that assessment upfront, I would like to argue that once you step foot onto someone else's private property, as Carl had said, you kind of relinquish that right. I understand that these businesses, these restaurants are public places, but they're still, in my eyes, a private entity, and should still be able to say, you know, they're, you're right to not breathe in someone else's smoke is not Trump, and business owners' right to be able to make that decision. You know, for example, I mean, I find it kind of the similar scenario, you know, if you come onto my grandpa's property and he's smoking, you can't force him to put it out because you condemn him and there's a crowd around him to do it. That's a poor, that's a poor example. That came out better earlier when I practiced that. Anyways, my recommendation to the Board is, you know, in an ordinance such as this, is really, it shouldn't even be explored. I don't even, I don't care, 99% of your constituents or the residents of St. Genevieve would support this. When it comes to trampling or overreaching on one's rights, I don't think my rules should really, really win this battle, but that's just my assessment, and like I said, I appreciate for the time, guys. Thank you guys for coming.
Okay, so my name is Dr. Matthew Bosner. I am a resident of the city of St. Genevieve. I'm a member of the hospital medical staff, I'm a staff cardiologist, I'm also a member of the medical executive board of the medical staff, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Department of Health. A couple of points I'd like to make, just to make the community and the Board of Aldermen aware. When ordinances have gone into effect in many communities, and a classic one is Des Moines, Iowa, when smoking ordinance went into effect, the death rates in Des Moines, Iowa dropped by 50% within six months when smoking ordinances went into effect. And that's because people stopped smoking in bowling alleys, in movie theaters, in restaurants on Friday night when people went out with their friends. And cardiologists were wondering where their businesses could have come from. And that's true, and you can look that up. Because people didn't go out on Friday nights smoking with their friends in bowling alleys and such. So smoking in public has a significant effect on public health, and that is a significant benefit that we could do for our community, not just a simple fact. It has nothing to do with stopping smoking in your homes, in your car, in your farms, et cetera, et cetera. This is an issue of public health for our friends and our children and future generations. And I think it's a relatively simple matter that we need to consider. It's not an individual, it's not an issue of public rights. I think it's an issue of public health and safety for our communities and the people we serve. I mean, we as a hospital, I think, have a, have a right to discuss this with our patients and have a service for discussion with our, with our patients on every visit, to discuss with them what we could do to discuss not only their current health concerns on that visit, but what they can do to make them stronger and healthier for the future. And stopping smoking, controlling their blood pressure, cholesterol, and other issues for public health and future issues. And stopping smoking is the number one thing which is going to stop them from having future heart attacks and strokes in the future. So, that's why I think that discussing this further and coming up with a reasonable plan that will accommodate this, I think would be very important for the health of not only the current generations, but for generations to come. So we would be happy to discuss this in some other forum to help answer any other questions, and all of us would be available to answer any other questions in the future. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss this with you.
Anyone else?
My name is Don Raffigan, I'm a longtime resident of St. Genevieve. And as I've seen through the decades, we are often engaged in what I call incrementalism. And to have something like this come after us from the local Alderman perspective, I think could be just a tip of the iceberg. One of the initiatives was mentioned earlier, and one of the things I'd like to see is, if smoking is part of these initiatives, what else is a follow-on to this? I get the impression it could be just a tip of the iceberg. What are we going to have coming on down the road because different health issues are obviously on everybody's plate? Smoking obviously is not good for a person's health. Education in that regard has come a long way, a lot of people have stopped. I just feel like it could reach further than what we may know down the road. I always say we learn as we go, it's usually too late. And that's why I'd kind of like to see these initiatives now, so we know what's coming down the road, so we can kind of be prepared for them rather than coming after these things all too late. Before we know it, we've got more ordinances coming after us, in whatever way, we don't know yet. So I'm looking at to draw a picture, and not so much just this particular issue, but what we don't know about in the future. And this is the first time, and I can recall, that this sort of thing that's coming after us from our city level. Now, maybe it's all well and good, but I still propose that it all be handled on a private business-to-business interview. For one thing, now you're in police, some business owner wants to disallow it outside their front door, fine. But like I said before, I'm coming at it from the draw of the picture. And so if anybody in the hospital would like to show me those initiatives that we don't know about, I appreciate it. So that's all I have to say.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Weiner. I am a smoker, nonsmoker, smoker, nonsmoker, back-and-forth type thing. I'm an overweight person, it's obvious. I have health issues, everybody does. But, they're talking about the smoking situation and the secondhand smoke. What about the drugs? What about alcohol? If you're going to limit a place to not allow them to smoke, then should we limit the alcohol? Because alcohol, you've got a drug driver, why should I be killed by somebody selling alcohol? I know it's not the situation of selling the cigarettes, it's the situation of the secondhand smoke, right? That's why we're all here. I agree with a lot of what he says, and as a smoker, nonsmoker, back and forth, the cigarette butt cans, yes, move them away from the door, I get it. If I have a bad habit, why should everybody else be exposed to it? There's little things that you can do, like, was it you, Terry, or Teddy? There's little things that you can do, like, um, was it you, Terry, or, um, Teddy that said something about negative words beneficial for everybody, and I think that's what we need to look at.
Hi, I'm Susan O'Donnell, one of the doctors here for twenty-six years, and I'm a doctor. Um, I'm just going to say that I have a slightly unique perspective, one is, I was trained in, um, lung medicine, but I come from the country which was the first in the world to stop smoking in public places, and this lone new young minister for health had this idea that he wanted to stop smoking in public places, and everybody thought he was absolutely nuts, especially in saying he was going to start in the pubs. Well, you know, they were, they loved smoke, so when I would go into a pub, because people eat in pubs, have coffee in pubs, talk in pubs, I couldn't breathe, it was really, really difficult to be in a pub unless you were. Anyway, we went through, this was in the nineties, and I was in my same favorite places, first visit, second visit, third visit, so the visit before it happened, veil of smoke, choking, your throat felt dry, you felt sick the next morning. The next visit, lots of people outside the door, smoking, and felt wonderful inside. The next visit, very few people, Ireland. I heard they asked, um, Ireland. Oh, okay. Anyway, it went on, and what happened was that the whole attitude in the country changed, that smoking was beginning to be seen as something, not that everybody did, and you couldn't have a drink without a smoke, or a coffee without a cigarette, but that it was really bad for you, and kids began to notice it and not smoke as much, and all sorts of people gave it up because it wasn't worth trying to go outside on a cold November day and smoke, and people began to really get it, and everything changed. ER visits went down, asthmatic children, way less, heart attacks, sudden death, it was absolutely unbelievable, and nobody expected this to happen. Say one other thing, there's one country in the world where women almost never smoke, and men almost all smoke, Japan. Women die of lung cancer in Japan from secondhand smoke, and probably one of the most famous people who never smoked a cigarette in her life and died of lung cancer was Christopher Reeve's wife, and as you remember, he was in a riding accident and was paraplegic, and for several years managed to stay alive, and his wife took care of him, she had been a nightclub singer and had sung in smoking nightclubs. So Christopher Reeve dies, they have a ten-year-old son, and three years later, she died of lung cancer, left the child in orphan. So secondhand smoke, because it's in ashtray, not through the filter that the smoker gets, is actually much more dangerous, and the absolute worst place that you can be is a car, and that's why it's literally child abuse to smoke in a car with your children, because it is sixteen times the concentration of smoke that would be in the smokiest room, just having one person smoking in a car with you. So I totally get what everyone's saying about freedom of choice, I really do, but we can't go ninety on the highway, we have to go seventy. Why? Because otherwise more of us would be killed. It's a public health measure, and it does eventually turn into actions. Thanks.
My name is Rachel Parker, um, I work at St. Genevieve Hospital, I'm the director of quality there. Um, one thing that I really like about healthcare are our statistics, and with statistics, statistics don't lie. I mean, you can have an opinion for, you can have an opinion against, but at the end of the day, a statistic is what it is. So I have two statistics that I wanted to share with everyone. Every year, seventy-three hundred deaths occur from can, occur from lung cancer related to secondhand smoke. Every year, thirty-four thousand people died due to heart disease related to secondhand smoke. Between nineteen sixty-four and two thousand and fourteen, over two-point-five million people died as a direct relation to secondhand smoke, and those are, those are all statistics that are publicized from the U, from the US Surgeon General. In addition to that, um, we as, as people, we often have a tendency to get in that comfort zone, and that's where we like to stay. We like to stay in that comfort zone because that's what feels comfortable to us, but our challenge as a community and as a hospital are to invoke change and try to move forward in the future. So rather than one of our community members being one of those statistics, I implore you to really consider this prospect of this ordinance. Um, it's going to be good for us, it's going to be good for our kids, it's going to be good for our children's children, but unless we take a stand against smoking in public places, we're going to have the same status quo tomorrow and the year after that. Thank you very much.
Okay, oh, I'm thinking, that's for what? All right, well, there's no one else to come forward and speak.
He just had a question, I think.
Go ahead.
I've gone into a lot of stores in this town, and there's nobody I ever seen smoking in them business, so that's one thing I went, oh, what about some of this taken? What? As Peter stated.
So, uh, Carl Weiner says that, um, he does not have a problem with secondhand smoke when he goes into stores and businesses in St. Genevieve, and, uh, suggested that some people were bothered about the perfume.
No, he would, he was stating that there's not very many businesses like Cut Jamart and that.
The reason he hasn't had a problem is because so few of them allow smoking. Anybody else?
I, I do have one question, and it's about the statistics. How do they, and I'm not arguing by anything, I'm just trying to educate myself, how do they determine that it's a secondhand, you know what I mean? Is it easy to dumb me down for me?
The question is, uh, how can you come up with a statistic that definitively concludes someone's death was a result of secondhand smoke?
Thank you.
So I think in, in those sense, this is one of our.
Until I hear an answer.
We're short back to the board.
I'll have to repeat.
I'm sorry.
Although I'm not a be-all, tell-all for this by any stretch of imagination, I don't claim, I don't claim to know everything there is to know about it either, but whenever you look at a patient, and we're all patients, I mean, we all have our primary compositions, we all have co-morbidities, we all have problems that we all have to be battled through on a day-to-day basis, so whenever you look at those patients and you look at their surrounding risk factors and within their, maybe their, their home environments, which of those homes had smokers in their homes? Which of those patients had co-morbidities that they would have not had had they not had those smokers in their homes potentially? So while it's hard to quantify, um, whether or not that is directly related to secondhand smoking, um, those are measures that the government, and if you go out on the internet and Google, um, you can kind of see studies and researches, um, a, a, across the spectrum where it discusses secondhand smoking, um, not only in our nation, as Dr. O'Donnell said, but even just across the world. And, um, so you can directly correlate patients who have smokers in their home or in their families with their co-morbidities, which ultimately leads to their death, so it may not be, yes, you have a smoker in the home and you die because of that, but it's all that lung disease and the heart disease and all the other complications that are, that come secondary to being exposed to that secondhand smoke.
Yeah, thank you for clearing that up.
Great, great question for you. In your, in your statistics, does that include vaping as part of the question?
Um, he asked, yeah, those statistics, um, include vaping as, as, as part of that study, um, and why, in my research that I've read, it did not specifically talk about vaping.
I will say to answer that question that, uh, many of the ordinances include electronic cigarettes. Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, I want to thank the board for turning out for this tonight, I want to thank those of you who took the time to come and speak. A lot more people are willing to post things on the internet and write things that are willing to actually come out on the earth, and that's unfortunate, but I always appreciate folks who, uh, take their time to participate in public processes, so that's again, we in turn. (applause)